Oh, they changed the date? I thought you didn't want to do it.
I get up.
What if they don't make it?
Yeah, no, I'm lucky, I wasn't going to stare, stare into your eyes.
We still need that, we still need the superintendent to approve.
That hasn't been done either, from my knowledge. I've asked her a couple of times, but she hasn't seen it.
Were they told that the date has changed?
Hey Linda, don't ask for student reps.
Oh, okay, thanks, I would have. How come they're not here?
Jim said it.
All right, that's a good point, I actually thought, I had that same thought earlier.
Right after the bills.
There we go.
Here he is, hold on, here he is.
Hi Luke, how are you? Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hi, we were getting worried.
Good evening. You weren't expecting us to be on time, were you? That's it. We're never on time.
I don't know who the other piece is filling.
Oh, I see.
I didn't do it.
All right, you guys want to have fun?
You do adjourn the agenda.
I'd like to call the board meeting for January 20th. Oh, I'm sorry, could I have a motion to adjourn a private session, please?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes, now I'd like to call the January 27th board meeting to order. Adequate notice that this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 8th, 2014 by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Please stand for the flag suit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, page 28. Could I have a motion that the board approved the minutes and the appropriate attachments of the agenda, regular meeting held on December 16th, 2013?
Move.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes, could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on December 16th, 2013?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes, and could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting held on January 6th, 2014?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes. On page 46, could I have a motion to approve payment of the bills totaling $7,782.38?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes, could I have a motion through the adoption of this? Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Martinak.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes, thank you. On page 47, Mr. Stein.
I just want to note that there'll be some minor modifications to the student agenda if we use a longer agenda.
Okay, thank you. Student representatives, Luke and welcome Andrew this evening. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. We have two featured teachers since last time we saw you. December was Mr. Dickhouse and January was the custodial staff. The Performing Arts have a variety show approaching February 8th. Tickets are $25. Doors open, is that the Elks Lodge? Elks Lodge, yeah. Doors open at 5:30, dinner served at 6:00, and performances are at 7:00. February 6th is the freshman orientation. We're going to see all the eager, confused incoming freshmen. And that night, they're picking what clubs they want to get involved in. And just information about the high school itself. We have a second lift-up coming up, February 8th. That is going to be from 8:00 in the morning to 11:00 o'clock. Best of luck to all students this week, how they take their midterms. We also have half-days, tomorrow's a full day, but the rest of the week is a half-day. SGA had a competition between all classes, who can bring in the most food for the food bank? And it was actually a tie between the freshmen and sophomores, so congratulations to them. And one of our SGA fundraisers is approaching, Lacey's Got Talent. And that is February 26th, sorry, at 7:00 in the auditorium. Tickets are $5. Hope to see you there.
Good evening. We have to, I'm filling in for Pat Moore, Andrew Como, Vice President of Senior Class. We have to make a concern, we have to make it a concern to press to get the rest of the senior class students that are interested in any activity at all, even parking, prom, that they need to get their drug, random drug testing forms filled out. Because without that, they're not going to be able to participate in anything else.
At this time, I'd like to call Nicole Tamboro. Unique, courageous, and talented are only a few words that describe January's unsung hero Nicole Tamboro. Nicole is heavily involved in the arts. She is a five-year honor member of the Lacey Marching Lions, a member of the LTHS Concert Band, Jazz Band Choir, Select Ensemble, and Women's Ensemble, and is currently playing the mayor in Lacey Township High School's Spring Musical, "Sioux School." Nicole volunteers at her church every Sunday at the cantor, and recently enlisted in the United States Army. You may recognize Nicole because she often volunteers as a national anthem singer at many high school events such as the academic awards and athletic award nights. Nicole continues to inspire her peers, and we are extremely proud of her. Best of luck, Nicole. And her family is here, everyone, clear?
Thank you, Luke.
You're welcome.
And congratulations, Nicole, good job. At this time, Superintendent Dr. Clark?
Thank you. And congratulations, Nicole, thank you, Luke, and thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
I'd like to start my comments out this evening, commenting on the weather. We've had a very unusual start to our 2014. Happy New Year, by the way, to all of our families out there. For high school students, they're anxious, I know, to take those midterm exams, and they keep getting postponed. How many times now, Mr. Hanshu?
Two or three.
Two or three, so, I don't know, I think they're hoping for some more snow. I, for one, and I think there are a lot of people out there that agree with me, I can't wait for April. But I think we've done okay, all things considered. And at this time, I'd like to recognize, first of all, our bus drivers. That one icy Friday morning that we had not too long ago was, by the account of several of our bus drivers, was the worst that they've ever seen. And they did a tremendous job getting all of our students safely to school, so we commend them and we thank them for their hard work, as well as our grounds maintenance and custodial crew for clearing out our walkways, getting our parking lots ready, and just preparing school to open on those very frigid mornings. So a round of applause to them, because I think they deserve it. And with that, spring is just around the corner, I know it. We'll see what the groundhog does on Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday. Before I continue with my comments, I'd like to invite Mr. Hanshu to announce our January Seniors of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Invite the Board of Education to join us over here. If I may invite up our first January Senior of the Month, Eric Wrightmeyer. Hello, I'm Mr. Hanshu, and welcome to Senior Spotlight January, where we meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Eric Wrightmeyer, who is ranked within the top 10 students of his class. You're president of two important clubs this year. Can you tell us about some of your involvement in peer mediation, ADEP, and others of organizations that you belong to?
Well, yes, I'm the president of ADEP, and it's a great club where we just remind students to stay away from drugs and alcohol. And we do many events with the middle school, middle school, elementary school, including the drug show. Just telling them that they can do other things to stay, like sports, any plays, instruments, just to stay away from drugs and alcohol. And peer mediation is another great club. It's just, it's more for the high school, but it's also starting in younger, like middle school and elementary schools. It's just when two students are having trouble in class, or anywhere in the school, and they're fighting or bullying going on, it'll come to their peers first. And we'll sit down and talk with them and try to resolve the problem, or it has to go to any principals or any higher-ranked official. So we try to resolve the problem to them first. I'm also involved a little in Interact, SGA, Heroes and Cool Kids, they're all pretty close.
And talking about peer mediation a little bit, as an administrator, we of course love it when you guys take care of things. Can you tell us what sort of organizations you're involved with outside of school?
I try to do a lot of community service. I'm very involved in the food bank. I'm always setting up, cleaning up for events, trying to raise money for them. And it's great because just when you're helping someone in need, it's just a great feeling. I also help out with the soccer tournaments, like the Labor Day tournaments and stuff. They always need people to help, and you know, anywhere from selling food and consecutive standing, picking up garbage for them, just doing anything you can to help. I also, for a few years, I helped out at the Lacey Basketball Camp, helping us volunteer events, so I try to stay very involved.
So you're pretty familiar with baseball, not only in the halls, but around the school, big town, too?
Yes.
You're a four-year varsity letterman. Can you tell us about your athletic career at Lacey?
I'm actually a four-year letter winner for both baseball and soccer. I've been playing those sports since I was five years old, and it's great to follow through with it and go right to high school still playing. And it's just, it's great being not only, like, good in school, but having the ability to play sports, too, because you just, you meet a lot of friends, you learn a lot through sports, too. And it's just, it's great that I followed through, from playing since I was younger all the way here, it's just a great feeling.
Well, you're truly a role model for the student athletes. Future plans, what are your future plans?
I actually will be attending Newlandburg College, I applied early decision there, so I'll be down there next fall. I'm planning, I think I'm definitely going for dentistry, going to try to go to the fablet, and I would hope to soon become a orthodontist. But I also was recruited to play baseball there, so I'll be playing baseball in spring in Newlandburg.
That's excellent. I've already had my teeth done, so I won't have to visit you like maybe someday, like, great, sure will. Well, congratulations, Eric, Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Sarah Wright. Eric's going to look at his plaque, it's a little very dark out there, so Eric's going to use the plaque.
Eric, congratulations on becoming the Board of Education for all your accomplishments, and good luck. Great, great job.
We also have Eric's family here, so we'll give a round of applause for them also. Now, our next winner could not be here, she apologized, great kid, Sarah Wright. She right now is making waves in the pool for the Lady Lions swim team. So, of course, with the meeting getting moved, of course, she has to help the team out. So we'd like to roll her tape, she can't be here, but we will definitely get the plaque to her. Welcome back to Senior Spotlight January. Now joining us is Senior of the Month, Sarah Wright. Sarah is ranked within the top 30 students in the class, and is president of the close-up club. Can you tell us about your involvement with the close-up club and your extracurricular activities?
We have played the club, the school club, it's a national organization. And every year we plan a trip to the city to help students learn more about our government. And we also encounter people to contribute for the board and for whoever's running office. So it's pretty cool, and I'm also involved in peer mediation. So we help students resolve their problems, and it's like a big way, and it's all confidential, so you know, it happens between, uh, students and athletes.
So you stay busy in numerous activities, that's awesome. You're also a four-year letter winner here as varsity athlete. Can you tell us about your career at Lacey Township in that week?
Yeah, I was a four-year letter winner for softball, so that's pretty, like, interesting, it's pretty cool. Three years for soccer and two for swim. And this year I was voted captain for all three, so it's pretty.
Well, congratulations, that's quite enough. Can you tell us about some of your voluntary work in the community that you've done outside of school?
I'm involved in student support kits, so I always help for their Christmas. They do a whole bunch of presents, and we help found them, organize them, and distribute them, so it's pretty cool. And I also helped in the town with the Lacey Labor Day tournament, so I helped field coordination and check teams in, so it's pretty fun.
So you're quite familiar, based not only in our halls, but on athletic fields, but also in community, that's exceptional. Future plans, what are your future plans?
I'm going to school, I don't really know if I could go to college yet. I was accepted to three of my five picks so far, and waiting to hear about them, too. But I'd like to go for religion and culture, and become a translator, so I take German, German five now and French one. So we'll be able to follow in those.
That's exceptional, very good luck with that. Congratulations, Sarah, on your selection of Senior of the Month. That's going to wrap up another Senior of the Month for January. We'll see you next month. Dr. Clark, thank you very much for allowing me to present our junior senior spotlight. And Eric, great job, Sarah is an excellent student, we're very proud of both of our student athletes, and that's what makes Lacey so special, students like the ones we have here tonight with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanshu, for an excellent presentation. And I think the video presentations become quite popular. We enjoy your jokes as well.
Sometimes do.
They're always good. And congratulations to Eric and to his family, well deserved. And even though Sarah couldn't be here, congratulations to her as well. And once again, congratulations to Nicole. I know all of you work very hard, and I know that your accolades are very much well deserved. So another round of applause to all of you. Okay, from big kids to the little kids. With us tonight, we have Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan is the music teacher and choral director at Cedar Creek School. And he is joined by several of his students, as well as Mrs. Donahue's supervisor and Mrs. Renesca, the principal at Cedar Creek. So let me tell you a little bit about what Mr. Brennan's going to be talking about in a few minutes. As I mentioned, joining Mr. Brennan, and I see that they're walking their way down. Tonight, we're going to recognize Mr. Brennan and his students for their outstanding community service with the American Heart Association. And Mr. Brennan, I know is going to tell us a little bit about why this group of students, along with Mr. Brennan's program, received the award, and we look forward to hearing about it.
For the past two years, the Cedar Creek School Chorus, and this is just a small group of, took a trip to Ocean City to perform at a fundraiser for the American Heart Association. It's entitled Grammy Presents: Music for the Heart. It is run by Patricia Miller, Grammy, she's a grandparent of Lacey students, and she facilitates the program. The event takes place each September of each year on a Saturday night. And myself, the parents, and students, they all elected to share their time on this Saturday to be part of this worthwhile cause. The Cedar Creek School students have been a part of this cultural arts variety show in various ways over the last two years. They were part of the pre-show both years, the actual show, and we've had two solos from our school and also with the finale of the show. They interact and they experience singing and dancing and performing with the local groups from various states, such as from New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Maryland, and of course, New Jersey, just to name a few. The Cedar Creek Chorus has been invited back next year to participate for a third time for this worthwhile event, which raises thousands of dollars for the American Heart Association. In addition, we also perform for local community members as well, for Spring Oaks Assisted Living and the Lacey Rotary Club. So Cedar Creek Chorus was recognized and given this plaque in recognition from the American Heart Association for their service in this fundraising project. And as Patricia Miller states, and she shares with our kids, without a heart, there is no life. The students that I have with me tonight, we have Gavin Gross, Sarah Cousin, Madeline Zek, Tiffany Musco, Grace Giordano, Amber Skellinger, and Gavin Brennan.
Well, Mr. Brennan, thank you so much. Boys and girls, thank you so much for joining us. I was hoping you were going to sing for us, but maybe that'll be next month? Or maybe we'll see them on American Idol someday?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. That's excellent. And I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to watch the Grammys last night. I couldn't stay up for the whole thing, but I saw most of it. And there was a piece in the Grammys where they, and the host talked a little bit about how important music and the arts is in school, and they actually awarded a music teacher for a job well done. And, you know, it's a shame that all of our music teachers couldn't be recognized on a program such as the Grammys. I don't know, Mr. Brennan, maybe we can get you on the show? Maybe next year we'll work toward that? Yeah? But the arts are so important, and, you know, we talk about academics and the importance of reading and literature and math, and those things are all very important, we know that. But the arts are also so important to balance our students. And, you know, tons of talent, we talked about Nicole, who sings the national anthem for us at every event. She has an amazing voice, I know we're going to see you on something someday. And so the arts are very important, especially for students like Nicole and students at Cedar Creek. Who knows, Cedar Creek students, maybe you'll take over for Nicole someday, singing the national anthem. And I know there are enough students out there that are certainly talented enough to be able to do that. So congratulations to all of you, and we thank you for being here with us tonight, very much so, thank you. And I also want to congratulate one of our high school teachers, Joe DiArcangelo. Has been named the South Jersey Soccer Coach of the Year, and we just found out about that. And that is a huge accomplishment. And although Joe isn't here with us tonight, I did want to congratulate him. I know the board was happy to hear that as well, so a round of applause to Joe DiArcangelo. Last month, at our December board meeting, I mentioned that in an upcoming board meeting, and I'm thinking it's going to be February, maybe March, we're going to talk a little bit about how our full-day kindergarten program is doing. And by all accounts, so far, we know that it's doing really well. But Mrs. Renesca and the district supervisors are gathering some good statistical data that we're going to be able to share with you about how our full-day kindergarten program is doing, and about some of the lessons that we've learned, some of the things that we've learned that have worked really well, and some of the things that we hope to change for next year, and make it even better. But I do know that so far, our teachers are reporting that the students are accomplishing so much in a full-day program. And we'll be reporting some statistics, like I said, either in February or March. So I look forward to sharing that information with you. Okay, transitioning, twice a year, districts are required to provide a harassment intimidation and bullying report as outlined by the Anti-Bullying Bill Act, Bill Rights Act. So tonight, I will be reporting for the period from July 1st, 2013 through December 31st, 2013, the semi-annual report, so I'll be doing that again in June or July, at the July board meeting. So again, this period is from July 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013. So I'm starting with Cedar Creek. We had one reported incident of HIV, and one was confirmed. And the difference between last year at that time and this year is one. So Cedar Creek last year had zero, this year they have one. Forkett River, zero reported, zero confirmed, that was the same for last year. Lenoka Harbor, one reported, zero confirmed, that is the same. Lenoka Harbor, one reported, zero confirmed, that is the same as last year. Milpon, one reported, zero confirmed, that also is the same. Middle School, four incidences reported, four were confirmed, and that is three less than this time last year. And the high school had 21 incidences reported, 11 confirmed. And that is one more than last year. So overall, 28 incidences reported, 16 confirmed, and that's a difference of one extra from again, this time last year. So I'll be reporting on that, um, again in July for the second half of the school year. And finally, I just wanted to uh, remind our families about a couple of upcoming very important dates and some changes. So I've already talked about the weather and we've had quite a few um, things rescheduled. One of those is the It's Elementary Family Academic Night. That was supposed to happen this Wednesday, however, that has been rescheduled to March 19th. So that information is already on our website, um, I believe it's already on TV 21, and we'll be constantly reminding our, our families. And we decided on March 19th with the hopes that the snow will be done by then, and I probably shouldn't say that too loud. Um, the second date that I wanted to remind our families about is our Second Annual Red Night Out, scheduled for February 27th, 7 o'clock PM, high school auditorium. And um, I know that we have two excellent uh, guest speakers aligned for that night, and uh, Mrs. Rineska and the district supervisors and the task force uh, have been working hard on, the municipal alliance task force, um, has been working hard on, on, on getting that program together. So we will uh, more than likely be sending out an automated call just to remind our families again on our website, TV 21, and uh, we hope to see um, as many parents and, and, and students and community members this year as we did last. And, and that's gonna be hard to beat because uh, last year was extremely well attended, and, and we hope that this year will be as well. And we do know, um, our date for kindergarten, kindergarten orientation is scheduled for March 12th. We are in the beginning stages of planning that evening, and again, we will be getting all of that information out to our families and uh, to our incoming kindergarteners. And that concludes my report for this evening. President Downing, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Luke and Andrew, if you'd like to leave, I know you have homework, so if you'd like to leave now, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go into, as you're leaving, I'm just gonna mention that the board committee reports, we, we reorganized last month, and the committees have been reorganized, so starting um, next week, actually, our committees will be back into action, um, and we'll be reporting at the next board meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
You may.
They're gone.
Good night, stay warm, thanks for coming.
Good night.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, Pop. Okay, at this time, residents of the community, if anyone would like to come up and speak, state your name and address.
Hello, Regina, Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Um, I have the save, a save the date announcement from the Lacey Township High School, PTSA. They asked that I announce their craft and vendor fair upcoming on Saturday, April 26th, from 10 to 3 PM. It will be held at the high school. Crafters and vendors are needed. Tables are $30 if reserved before March 1st, and after March 1st, the full price for a table will be $35. And anyone can contact the high school or leave a message, um, at the front desk if someone wants a table.
April 25th?
26th. It's the last Saturday in April, right after Easter. Um, congratulations to the new board members. They have a tough task ahead of them to accomplish any budget adjustments, and I've been reviewing the monthly bills since um, summer of 2013. And I've located some items that could or should be stricken or revised from the next LTEA contract. One of the items I've located is in-district travel mileage reimbursement. There are employees making over a hundred thousand per year, and uh, they are getting reimbursed for in-district travel. And I think that's kind of unfair to the taxpayers to reimburse at such a high salary, because it's less than four miles to any one building, and if the job requires travel from building to building, so be it. So I'm thinking the in-district mileage travel reimbursement must go and make a, a, I'm just giving a hundred thousand a year as an example, but anybody making over 75, there should be a cutoff point where in-district mileage travel reimbursement is allowed. There really should be, because it's just like a mini bonus check to anyone that keeps collecting them at those high salaries. My family has never in our lifetime made that kind of money. Uniform reimbursements was another item that I saw, and I've discussed this before. I think it's an antiquated union benefit left over from the days of shoveling coal into furnaces. I have not seen two custodians dressed alike, and I've gone from school to school many times. Some wear jeans, some wear Dicky's work pants and shirts, but I've seen no defined uniform, nor any enforcement of a specific uniform. So my suggestion would be, instead of issuing clothing allowance checks where the employee may do anything they wish with, the district should just issue a shirt, perhaps with an embroidered school name and the person's name, once or twice a year, so that everybody has the same shirt, because I'll tell you, you can go from building to building any given day, and you will not find two people wearing the same type of pants. So obviously, people are not buying uniforms with their uniform checks. That's just a conclusion that I've drawn. And I think that should be fixed come the next contract. Another expense that I located was the $150 allowance for clothing for coaches. The board should just issue any jacket or uniform that a coach may need. If the same people coach year to year, how many jackets or uniforms do they need? After a while, this $150 becomes like a bonus check. If the coaches are volunteer, they are a volunteer, and they should not be compensated at the expense of the taxpayers. Teacher-coaches receive stipends on top of the $150 uniform allowance. For a two-month period, I could not believe how many coach clothing checks were issued. I would rather see that money in the classroom, for teachers, for supplies, for textbooks, class trips, and so forth. I really think some of this money needs to be diverted back into the classroom. And that's just a few suggestions I have for the new board members. And last but not least, the health benefits contributions must be reconfigured in a way, on a sliding scale, of course, to give a break to the taxpayers. Perhaps it would be cost-effective to offer lower prices to the single employee plans, and perhaps a larger employee contribution for family plans. I have here um, a report that I requested last July, and it was the expenses for health and benefits, um, from January to June 30th of 2013. It amounted to $6.2 million. The taxpayers cannot continue to keep footing bills like this. Something needs to be done, and I would ask, when the next contract negotiations come up, and I know it's gonna be soon, some older things need to be stricken out of the contract. We need a no-frills contract, and I hate to say it, but that in-district mileage reimbursement is a frill.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Moss?
Bill Moss, Miss Cane Drive, Forked River Beach. My question is just for the attorney, anything on the uh, circle group on the fraud that they, fifteen hundred, $15?
We're being ignored.
Pardon?
We are being ignored.
We're being ignored?
Ignored. They're not responding.
So, okay, now, okay, I understand that. Now, now what do you do?
Well, it gets up to the board. I uh, suppose we could make a, an attempt to reach them by telephone. That's up to the board.
Could I put that before a board, uh, for a yes vote or a no vote? I'm making the phone call? And call the board?
No, you can ask a question, you can make a statement.
Okay. But it's up to someone on the board to bring it up and say, should we call them?
Well, I, I mean, I've made the effort repeatedly, and uh, I mean, I understand what's going on. I've been doing this a while, and um, you know, I would have to try to, the case, as far as the US Attorney's Office is concerned, the case is over. They feel they've done their job, they, uh, the case resulted in convictions, and I don't know what the sentencing has been, but the case has resulted in convictions, and that's really their primary responsibility. So it's very hard to get them to refocus on something that's over.
All right. I, I wanna ask again, it's just, it's going on for three years now, so.
I'll just, I will certainly discuss it with the appropriate representatives of the board.
That's all I can ask, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comments. We'll start now, Mrs. McAvoy. Board comments?
Sure. Hello. I would, I'd like to congratulate Nicole and Sarah and Eric Wrightmeyer. I've known Eric for many, many years, and I've worked with him with Interact, PTSA, and the Food Bank, and he's a true, true role model to the school. So congratulations to all three of you, especially Eric, since I know him personally. And congratulations to Coach DiArcangelo for the South Jersey Coach of the Year. That's truly a great honor. I had the pleasure of attending the middle school winter concert the other night, and the children were phenomenal. It was a very enjoyable, congratulations to Mr. Leidy, Mrs. Hirsch, and Mrs. Noon for all the hard work that they put forward. And also, I was able to attend the National Honor Society induction, and congratulations to Mrs. Pennett and all the inductees, and also our very own Mr. Leidel and Mrs. Dee Felice, who got special awards from the students. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schubiger?
Thank you, President Downing. Uh, first, I do wanna thank and congratulate all of our students again who were honored tonight and throughout the district. Uh, thanks for making all of us real proud and entire community proud of what you're, what you're doing. Then I have just a couple more comments. First, uh, regarding use of our school district of facilities, the public buildings, we don't have a recreation center in Lacey Township, uh, so our school buildings really are our recreation center. Uh, in both as my role as a board member, and as a parent, and as a coach in town with some youth activities, our schools are used a lot. Um, and we're real happy to share those public buildings with uh, with everyone in town. Um, and I, I do have to say, I noticed that the community tends to take care of our facilities. Uh, when I go out and I'm coaching or I'm attending, uh, one of my kids' games, uh, I think the respect level is really there from our community. That being said, this is the time during the winter months when we have a lot of indoor activities, and our schools are used even more for a lot of different things. So just a reminder, we're happy to provide them to everyone, but please be respectful, uh, use the trash cans, uh, follow any, any rules that might be out there from the township that are overseeing the use of the facilities. Most everyone does, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I do notice that there's a lot of us out there using the schools, and we will continue to offer them to the community. Also, this has been an unusual winter weather season, it's not even halfway over yet. And I, I just wanna share, I, I'm pretty certain that our superintendent, her favorite thing to do is not deal with weather advisories, just being president most recently, and just common sense. I, I know she's got a lot on her plate, it's not, but it's something that she has to spend a lot of time on. Um, and I just wanna remind the community, especially our parents of, of schoolchildren in town, um, please don't just think about how the weather might impact you personally. Obviously, that's at home is most important, but the school district has to look at it really big picture. Uh, and maybe the streets around you are okay, or maybe by the time your child needs to go to school, it appears to be okay. But we have to look at it from the perspective of what's going on at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. And I think sometimes, sometimes, some of us parents, and I'm one of them, forget that it's really, um, everything impacts, uh, every facet of transportation, and it's a big undertaking, and we're always rated very high in our district around the state for how safe we are, and we wanna continue to keep it that way. Um, I want to, believe me, I want the kids in school, I want them learning, but safety's pretty paramount to all of us, and we have to keep that in mind. So it's a difficult decision, I don't envy that one. Um, but I thought just to remind you would be something, um, it impacts a lot, not just uh, your, your block or your part of town. So with that, uh, those are my comments for now, and uh, I'm gonna turn it back to President Downing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schubiger. Mr. Giordano?
Thank you, President Downing. Um, I'd like to congratulate Sarah, Eric, and Nicole. Um, it never ceases to amaze the amount of balance that these students have with extracurricular activities, sports, volunteer work, and then managing academics. Um, it's great to see, you truly are role models to the community, so thank you to you, um, and uh, thank you to your parents, it's, it's a great accomplishment. Um, to Coach DiArcangelo, um, I know I had a father that coached in the public school systems for 30 years, so I know the sacrifices that you make, um, in coaching kids, and also, you know, being a role model and teaching them the sport, so congratulations on the Coach of the Year Award. You know, we did have some pretty interesting weather, uh, the last few weeks, and when we had that crazy ice storm, uh, you know, the roads were horrible. So that all of our students got to school safely without incident, I think that's a true accomplishment to our, to our drivers and to our grounds crews for the, uh, for the, the school district, so congratulations to them as well for a job well done. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carney?
Thanks, President Downing. Here's where it gets a little redundant, but we do it anyway. Um, congratulations to our three seniors of the month, great efforts. Um, special congrats and thanks to Mr. Brennan, his talented group of students and their parents for donating their time and efforts to the American Heart Association. And another congratulations to Coach DeAngelo on his South Jersey Coach of the Year. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, President Downing. Uh, too, I'd like to congratulate Eric and Sarah and Nicole. Uh, it's always great to hear about the, the great things our students are doing, and this month was no exception. Um, I'd also would like to congratulate Mr. Brennan and the Cedar Creek School students, uh, and as Mr. Carney said, also thank their parents for taking them out. Uh, just another thing that, that they have on their plate, but they committed the time to take their children to these events, so we appreciate that. I too would like to thank the bus drivers and our grounds crew. It's been one heck of a winter so far, and it's only halfway over. Hopefully it gets better. Um, but uh, we've had a very safe winter season. Our grounds crew has been working double duty. Uh, we have quite a few acres of parking lots and miles of sidewalks to do, and that's done by the school district employees. Um, and last but not least, Dr. Clark, she's had I don't know how many opportunities between December and January to make the most watched decision a school superintendent has to make, which is whether or not to close or open delayed, and I think she's made the right call on each one so far, and it's been quite a challenging winter. So I'd like to thank everyone for helping us get the district through this, this very wintry season that we're having. Uh, I did wanna mention, uh, if nobody, if, if you haven't heard, Mr. Matt Geiger, who was formerly a high school teacher here in Lacey Township, was recently selected to be a World Cup referee, one of only two referees in the upcoming World Cup games from America. Uh, Mr. Geiger, you may remember, had coached soccer, he was very involved in refereeing and referee clinics, and actually helped get a, a grant to get our uh, TV 21 folks to make a soccer refereeing video for Use in the State a couple of years ago. And uh, he left us um, about two years ago, I think it was, uh, he was, oh, and by the way, a fantastic math teacher. Uh, taught our AP classes, we had uh, high number of students getting fours and fives on the AP exams, great math. We had high number of students getting fours and fives on the AP exams, great math SAT scores. But he left us as a math teacher in order to pursue his full-time goal of becoming a World Cup referee. He worked long and hard while he was teaching here in the summers and on weekends, you know, on the weekend he'd fly to Washington and do a game. And in the summers, he'd be going to South America and Europe, and it was, it was his dream, and he worked hard, and he had to give up teaching, but he reached his goal and he was selected to be a referee for the World Cup tournament coming up. So those of us that knew him and worked with him, send out our congratulations. And last but not least, the Red Night Out event that's coming up, I highly, highly recommend that parents attend. It was, last year's event was eye-opening. And if you think you know what's going on in Ocean County, and you think you know what your students are doing, your children are doing, and who they're hanging out with, even if you think you know what's going on, it's a great event to attend because it really lays out some of the issues that are going on in New Jersey and Ocean County, and some of the things to watch out for, some of the things that can go terribly wrong in a terribly short period of time. So the Municipal Alliance, the Police Department, and the schools have been working together cooperatively on this for the last two years, I guess it is. And this event is, is the most recommended event I can, I can recommend you attend at our schools in this state. So please make it a point, if you can, to put that on your calendar and get out. So, is that, it's coming up, you have the date?
February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth or seventh?
Twenty-seventh. Seventh. Twenty-seventh, right?
Seventh.
Yeah.
February twenty-seventh.
Yes.
At the high school. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, and it is redundant, but I would also like to congratulate Nicole and Eric and Sarah, and I'm hoping Sarah will be here next board meeting, so we can acknowledge her. And yes, Mr. Giordano said it as well, it's amazing that, how these students handle their time and get everything done that they do. And the civic-mindedness of these students, adults should take a lesson from them and what they do for our community. National Honor Society, I'd like to congratulate the seventy inductees. It was a wonderful ceremony, as always. It's one of my favorite to attend. Also, I'd like to congratulate the parents and guardians of the seventy inductees because it was your night, too, to see your students accomplish and reach that milestone. That's so great for parents to say. I want to thank also the bus drivers and the grounds. I'll tell you, that Friday, trying to drive, it was like being on an ice skating rink and trying to keep your car in the road. And our buses got everyone here safely, and the grounds were all clear in all our snow. And I want to thank Jim Savage because it's his direction. He's in charge of grounds and buses. And Sue Lynch for the bus transportation. So thank you for your guidance to make sure everything was done right and safe. Kids were there safely, and that's what was important. Mr. Brennan, it's always great to see, especially our younger students, get involved with musicals and music festivities and going down to Ocean City on a weekend, donating their time and efforts. Congratulations, and for a great cause, the American Heart Association. As Mr. Martinak said, Red Night, try, if you can, to make that night. It's a great night, February twenty-seventh. And also, put on your calendar the Elementary Academic Night for March nineteenth, and good luck to our high school students on their midterms. And that's it for me. Okay? Anything else that you have to add? Okay. All right, so let's go on to new business, please. On page forty-eight, new business, A through G, we are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion, but we need to amend item E.
Yes, item E should be amended in the paragraph headed kindergarten. The first two sentences are correct, and the third and fourth sentences are actually repeated, so they should be amended.
Could I have a motion?
I'll move as amended.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Page fifty, donations. Move to approve the following generous donations. Donation for a family in need from an anonymous donor for Cedar Creek at three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Two scoreboards and installation for the gymnasium at Lacey Township High School by the Booster Association, ten thousand dollars. A generous donation for a teacher mini-grant program for the German program for Lacey Township High School PTSA, from the LTHS PTSA, at the high school for five hundred dollars. A teacher mini-grant program for the AP Chemistry Program, again, Lacey Township High School PTSA, for the high school for one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. And a donation check from Box Tops for Education for Milpon School, one thousand, twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. Thank you so much for your generous donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yeah, and I just want to note, too, you know, these donations are so critical to us, and we appreciate it. We get individual donations, and we have good relationships with a lot of corporations and businesses in town, which traditionally help us out. Walmart, I know I've seen on here, and Target and McDonald's helps out. It's very supportive of the school district, and I want to make sure we mention that, how much we appreciate McDonald's. So thank you, and I will vote yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay, item four on page fifty-one, professional days. Could I have a motion, please?
I may have one at the top.
And on the top of fifty-two, thank you.
No, the top of fifty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip that?
Yes.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry. Item three, programs and curriculum. Could I have a motion for item A?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. And now on to professional days, item four, fifty-one and the top of fifty-two. Could I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Second.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item five on page fifty-two, could I have a motion for use of facilities?
Yes.
Move, please.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item six, certificated personnel. We want a table.
Item B, Bravo, two.
Two B, we are going to table. Do we have to do a second motion? Okay. Could I have a motion then to table two B?
Move. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Now, could I have a motion for items A through G as modified?
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Martinak?
Yes.
Mr. Schubager?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item seven, support non-certificated staff personnel. We need an amendment, I believe, for A two?
A correction on A two from Lacey Township High School to Cedar Creek.
So could I have a motion as amended?
I'll make that motion for a second. I think Sean got the first one.
Mr. Giordano and then Mr. Schubager? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.